All right, call the school committee meeting February 27th to order at 7:05. Stand for the pledge really.
I pledge to flag the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our command and is well governed with justice.
Excuse me. All right, I already did the warrants earlier. Now move on to citizen comments. Nothing there. So move on to the chair's report. One second. Excuse me. All right, so I just wanted to say that on Monday, February 25th, Dr. Harvey formally submitted his letter of resignation to me stating that he plans to leave his position as superintendent of the Hamilton Regional School District on June 30th. Excuse me, I just wanted to thank Dr. Harvey for the seven years of service he has given to Hamilton Regional School District and publicly recognize all of the great work he's done here. Here spelled completely wrong. You know, local revisionist history will let us like us to believe that the school is in, you know, great shape when you first walked in, but really things couldn't be further from the truth between the leadership turnover, crumbling infrastructure, and improper accounting practices left the district in actually a really precarious state. And, you know, you walked in and really led the team on rebuilding Hamilton to, you know, its past levels of excellence. And, you know, you brought in a top-notch educational leadership teams and business leaders and really began the long transition of Hamilton becoming, you know, an even better educational district. So while the importance of long-term leadership within a school district may not be realized by all, it's definitely not lost on me. So the changes in hirings you made while you were here the past seven years has created the solid foundation for Hamilton, you know, to begin to move forward to the next level of excellence. And while those programs and initiatives are now going to be put on hold while you try to fill the very large void you're leaving, I know that Masconum will be very happy with the unanimous selection to lead their district to their next level of excellence. So I know we still have a few months left together, but I just wanted to thank you again for your seven years of service to our school district and to our community. I wish I was able to keep you here with us, but I want to congratulate you on your new role. And don't think just because you're moving to Boxer it's going to keep me from dropping in once a week. Thank you.
Always welcome. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
All right, that's all I've got.
All right. Couple of things to report. So just remember to remind everyone kindergarten information night is coming up on Monday, March 18th at 6:30 PM right here in the Bucher multipurpose room. We're going to be doing registration for kindergarten in the district offices at Five School Street, and those will take place from Monday, April 1st through Friday, April 5th between 9:00 AM and noon. And then additionally, we're going to have registrations on Wednesday from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM on Wednesday, April 6th. And so all the registration information and the required forms are available on the district website. I also want to report that we have eight individuals that have submitted their names to be candidates for the three open Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee seats. These individuals include incumbents Michelle Bailey and David Polito, and potentially new members Gary Cheeseman, Alexander Dale, Michelle Horgan, Valerie McCormick, Ryan Scarrett, and Merrily Webster. Elections will be held in Hamilton and Wenham on Thursday, April 11. We have a couple of events coming up at the high school that are put on by our guidance department. Parents and students are invited to attend a free seminar on college admissions this Thursday, tomorrow night at 6:30 PM in the music room at the high school. Seminar is offered through Mefa, the Commonwealth's Authority on Planning, Saving, and Paying for College. An experienced Mefa representative will provide an overview of college admissions, including building the college list, the college application process, and trends in college admissions. Before the seminar, be sure to visit Mefa's website, M-E-F-A dot org, to download a copy of the seminar presentation and to explore other tools and resources to assist in the college planning process. Additionally, the guidance department will host its popular and informative annual college panel for juniors and interested sophomores and their families on Thursday, March 28th at 6:30 PM, and that'll be actually in the multipurpose room at Miles River. Representatives from several colleges and universities will address matters pertaining to the college search, application, and admission processes. We still have two teams from the high school are involved in the state playoffs. Boys' ice hockey has earned the number seven seed in the Division III North Tournament, and they will face Latin Academy at Stonemarina tomorrow night, Thursday, at 6:00 PM. And boys' basketball won their opening round matchup against Triton and will next face Shawshank Tech on Saturday, March 2nd at 4:00 PM, and that's going to be at Tewksbury High School, it's a neutral site game. And just a reminder that there'll be no school on Monday for students, on Monday, March 11th, for the Teachers Professional Development Day.
Good. All right, up next, the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything, minutes from January 30th or February 13th?
I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee accept the consent agenda items for the minutes of January 30th, 2019, and February 13th, 2019, as is, and there can be no changes.
Second?
All those in favor? Unanimous?
Student government has called to cancel yesterday, so they're not coming.
Laura, anyone to just add that? But your mom said that we should throw to you more often in meetings last time, so...
I don't really have anything to update on. Nothing that crazy is happening. The DECA trip is next week. Yeah, next week, so that's exciting, but yeah.
All right, excellent. Student government. Excuse me. Now report on school committee and superintendent's goal progress. I actually thought we did this a couple of weeks ago. Excuse me. Going over the school committee goals for 2018, 2019. First thing on our list is advocate for a budget that calls for educational excellence while being mindful of the fiscal constraints of the communities, seeing as we just voted to move our budget for approval to town meeting, I'd say we're on course for that, to meet that goal. So the next thing is reprioritize capital plans and development and implementation strategy. I noticed on our committee, on our agenda for tonight, that there should be a committee report so we can see where we are on that point. Excuse me.
For which one?
The reprioritize capital plans and develop an implementation strategy.
Page 17.
Yep.
Monitor the cutler SOI process and act as information is revealed. So we actually heard back that we were not chosen this year to move on with that, and believe we are moving forward with the submitting a new SOI.
And when do we expect that?
Well, that has to be in by what, April 1?
No.
Isn't April 1st the deadline, or Aprils?
No, it's April... I believe it's April 12th.
So we should do that in March sometime?
Yeah, I had it for...
I thought we were going to resubmit the cutler SOI.
I thought we voted to do the two together.
You can do one for one.
So it's not two together, they'd be two separate.
Two separate what?
Right, simultaneously, yeah. But we still have to approve those once they're...
Correct.
Yeah, so we should do that in March. Otherwise, I mean, I guess we could do it on the 10th.
April 10th is a little... We can do it on April 10th, that's when I had it penciled in for, because then it's just hitting a button.
Is that an in-the-mail thing, or is that a...
It's electronic.
Electronic thing.
Yeah, it's literally clicking a few boxes.
So it's not, gee, it could get messed up in the mail.
Yeah.
Communication, part of our goals, be more active outreach to our legislators regarding our district needs. I do know that I saw a few people interested in going to Day on the Hill this year. I know this is something I could definitely step up more with myself, reaching out to, you know, Brad as our legislator, as that legislator, rather, and really trying to get more involved on that side of things.
When is Day on the Hill this year?
What's that?
When is Day on the Hill?
I think it's May 1st. It's in May, it's not in April.
Okay.
But it's like early, early May. MSC posted it on Facebook. Do you remember the date?
I'll look it up.
David, I think I sent it to you too, and to Jean, through Facebook, that...
It's May 1st.
Oh, that's right, you're not, I couldn't send it to you. You are not on Facebook, that's right.
Right, yeah.
You're too young for Wednesday, May 1st.
Good move, dude. You know, keep yourself private. It's protest.
I don't, the, you know, second part of this, the sub-bullet, the more communication with town committees, BOS and FinCom, excuse me, I know personally this year, I've actually reached out and spoke to more people than I have in the past two years of my time here in the committee, and that there have been other members of the, of our committee reaching out. I think we're really starting to develop a good rapport with the board of selectmen and FinCom. There's always, always room for improvement, but, you know, I think we're actually doing a good job of accomplishing that goal. Excuse me. And then finally, work collaboratively with the MASC to fully convert and implement the online school committee policy manual. So I know the last meeting we had, we were sort of in a limbo state with them.
No, actually, we're moving forward.
Yeah, but we set the date.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, we're moving forward, but I just know that we...
Well, and it took that administrative, like Donna had to convert a whole bunch of files to a specific format and then turn them in, and so, but the last meeting, a couple of meetings ago, Dr. Harvey told us that they had facilitated that, and it was all good to go, so that's why we're where we are now.
Yeah, I'm not too worried about that.
Should be a good space.
Actually, I see that we've been making good progress on that. You know, the only thing I can really think of, you know, obviously, I think we could do more work on reaching out to legislators. I think this budget cycle really pointed out that a lot of the demands financially and the hardships that we are facing really can only be solved at a legislative level. And, you know, so we really need to get moving on that, you know, try and, you know, adjust our funding accordingly, and, you know, the cost of out-of-district placements, and the multitude of things that really we can't act on autonomously.
On that subject, I have a call into Brad Hill about a special ed transportation and the Transportation Commission, he was trying to get off the ground, and wondering if he ever did.
Well, you know, if Governor Baker is serious about... It's not serious.
The funding formula, this may be the opportunity to sort of, as a, either as a district ourselves or with other North Shore districts, like have a collective voice.
Right, I think if I remember correctly, the governor's plan would net us about, is it like under $50,000?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. It's not much of a plan, as far as we're concerned. But, I mean, anything is obviously, is helpful.
I know several, the MSC has posted several times about school committees signing on to a resolution to support the implementing the Chapter 70, whatever that was, budget review commissions, recommendations that, you know, include things like special ed and healthcare in the formula.
So I think one thing, and obviously I haven't looked at everything that's out there, but a lot of the plans that are currently floating around aren't necessarily good for our district. We have the, you know, unique place of being, you know, a sort of high-ranking, high socioeconomic regional district that a lot of these times, these funding formulas are, really don't end up helping us. So it's tough finding that, you know, which one to sort of sign off on that's really good for us. You know, there's obviously a lot of good, if you're taking into education as a whole, a lot of these things are really good all around to help, you know, all the students of Massachusetts, but, you know, for our specific district, I know that I've had a hard time really finding anything that would benefit us in any substantial way.
So maybe we should have Brad come in and educate us on that so that we can talk about it.
That's a good idea. Okay, any other notes on our school committee goals, how we feel like we're going through the year? Moving on, the F-19 financial forecast.
I have my part.
We're just not going to let Mike talk about what he's been doing.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
Give my part. Okay. All right. So I'm going to give a rundown, there's written statements about the progress on goals. So the first goal was working with the Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction and our building leadership team to ensure that students, all students have, in grades K to 8, have access to instruction in the mathematics, Massachusetts Standards for Mathematics instruction, and that was implementing the mathematics resources that were part of last year's budget. And so, not going to take too much time on this one because we actually have Peggy McElhany, Jen Sorel, and Christine Fashera. Jen Sorel is the 6 to 12 mathematics curriculum leader, and Christine Fashera is our K to 5 mathematics director. They are on the agenda for our next meeting in two weeks to give us a full experience of those resources that we've implemented. So get ready to do some number talks at our next meeting. So, but to say that implementation is progressing on schedule, and there's no unexpected surprises there. The next piece was around building the leadership's team's capacity to faithfully implement the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's educator evaluation system. As we've talked about, there was an update to the rubric for teachers this year, and so this implementation is progressing on schedule. In the fall, we put together an essential elements of teacher evaluation document, and that was posted to the district website. Additionally, the educator evaluation system page of the website has been redeveloped in addition to an explanation of those essential elements. We now have the, the page now includes a timeline of the relevant dates and required forms that are used in the process, and a frequently asked questions section that was developed from questions that were solicited from teachers about the process. And then in the spring coming up, the leadership team will continue the work, it started last year around building consensus on what it identified, on what we identified as those essential elements, and what they look like in practice, and then we'll do some calibrating on how we report teachers' progress towards proficiency on those elements. So we have some work actually with, we have a consultant who's coming in to work with us, I believe it's a week from Thursday, and then we're going to wind up, and then we're going to do some shared walkthroughs with this consultant to calibrate on what we see. So those are all progressing on schedule. The next goal was around developing a new strategic blueprint document to guide the district's improvement efforts for the next five years. So the development of the document is behind schedule, I've been saying this all along, but we're still progressing. The document underwent several revisions between summer of 2018 and winter of 19, and the most recent draft is now being circulated to the friends groups and building faculty in all schools for feedback. This process I expect to be completed by the end of March. Feedback from these meetings will be considered by the leadership team as we look to put together a final draft that should be ready in April. And then after that draft is printed, the school committee, the leadership team will develop a series of communications around the revised plan. And then the fourth goal was around implementing the Alice Crisis Response Protocols, and again, that's, those, this goal's work is progressing on schedule. In August, we had over 50 members of faculty and staff and members of the Hamilton-Wenham Police and Fire Departments trained as certified Alice instructors. And then in September and October, every staff member completed an Alice online certification course, and middle and high schools faculty and staff have now completed Alice training drills. We started those on November 28th, we had it on January 27th, or January 30th, and then today was the third scheduled drill, and we have one more scheduled for April 10th for the middle and high school teachers. And now that we're sort of wrapping up the middle and high school, we're going to move to the elementary faculty, and so those drills are scheduled for March 13th, March 27th, April 24th, and May 8th. I've also prepared our draft crisis response plan for the district, which incorporates the Alice protocols. The building principals are in the process of reviewing it and submitting feedback, and then after that's incorporated, we're going to produce a final draft of that document. And then student training on the Alice protocol will begin in September of 2019 with the start of school.
So will we hear more about this student training on the protocol in the spring, since it'll be implemented like right away, or is the planning to happen during the summer?
I think the plan is to have it start off in September, and we're still sort of talking about what it's going to look like right now, we haven't finalized it.
I think it would be good to air that out here for the public to hear first, just in case particularly parents of elementary school kids may have concerns that they just want to have heard.
Yeah, I think what we wind up doing is having a parent night even before the training started anyway.
Okay, so, yeah, if it's, even if it's that, that's, yeah.
That would be part of the plan, is to have a parent information night in September to talk about what the training is going to look like for kids.
Yeah, because some parents may choose to opt out if they think that it's not what they want.
It'll be pretty scaled back for...
Some parents may just, you know, want to be notified when it's going to happen so they can prepare their kids.
Right, that and all.
And it depends on, you know, developmental ages and stuff like that, so, yeah. Yeah, so if it was done in October, you could maybe incorporate that in a curriculum night, an extended curriculum.
I think there's just going to be a special, a specific night on.
Okay.
This is, you know, we've even roughly talked about, you know, I think the slideshow that police did.
Oh, okay.
With the school committee going over two years ago, something, having something similar like that.
That might scare the living daylights out of you.
Unfortunately, that's what it is.
All right, now we're getting to the financial forecast.
Okay. Jeff sends his regrets, he's just getting back in the.
From which beach?
Just getting back in the United States today.
He regrets he's back.
So, um,
I would too if I.
For the F nine operating expense forecasts, um, this forecast is for, uh, all of our actual costs through, uh, February fourth, uh, plus any of the known encumbrances in the salary section. It also includes the forecasted values for all costs not automatically encumbered through June thirtieth, uh, twenty nineteen, including long-term substitutes, daily substitutes, and overtime. And then on the operating side of things, again incorporating actual costs, uh, plus the, through February fourth, plus all known encumbrances, and then a forecasted value for costs not automatically encumbered, uh, including school discretionary spending, transportation, out-of-district tuition, maintenance, technology, et cetera. And so right now, we're currently forecasting to end the year a positive of five thousand dollars, or zero point zero two percent favorable to the budget. Um, Jeff has sent along the expense categories by budget. Um, you know, the, the big piece is what we've talked about, um, throughout this year, um, with the, assuming the use of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the circuit breaker revolving account, um, to cover the overage and out-of-district tuitions, and that will fully deplete that account, um, by the end of this year.
So, what does this salary cost thing mean? It includes forecasted values for all costs not automatically encumbered through June, including long-term subs, daily substitutes, and overtime. So, the forecast does include those things?
It does.
It does not?
It, it does include those things, yes.
So, tho- those are some sort of, there's some sort of assumption around how many of those we have based on the past?
Right, so normally we, nor, so for, uh, any staff member, we encumber their salaries all the way through the year. However, we've had changes to that, um, you know, for maternity leaves or extended sick leaves or whatever. Um, and so, he's, uh, built that in, that those pieces that we know, such as long-term subs, daily subs, and overtime.
And if for some reason we have to use less subs, money's left over, if there's not overtime taken, money's left over.
Right, right.
Talking about teacher service.
Hey Mike, what's the, what's the, uh, overage in the other teaching services, you know?
Which ones?
The seventy-five thousand dollars?
Don't know.
Okay.
I'll find out.
I would, I was just gonna ask the same thing.
Yeah. I'm sure that, I'm sure that it's been spoken about before, I just don't remember.
Yeah, I don't recall.
Yeah, we can, we can ask him in two weeks.
Yeah, okay.
If we're actually, towards this, towards the end of the year, we actually do this more frequently too. There's another one scheduled for the first meeting in April.
Yep.
As well.
And is the tuitions, is that, uh, something new, or?
That's the out-of-district that we've been talking about all year.
Okay.
Cool. Five thousand in the bank.
Yeah, but, but the reason it's twenty thousand is because it assumes that you've taken
Everything out of.
Two, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of the circuit breaker and put it into our budget for this year, so, yeah. So it's really off by a lot more than that because of this, yeah.
I know, that's why I'm trying to figure out exactly.
That's the way I read it, I don't know.
Okay.
All right, um, moving on, the school committee budget communication plan. So, wanna think about how we're gonna go about this, this year, last year. We had those flyers go out to help explain the the, um, costs and sort of the drivers of the, you know, uh, override in Wenham, and also the, excuse me, debt ex- uh, exclusions that we're asking for at that time. So, obviously we did a relatively good job because our overall budget got passed, uh, the one-third sprinkler budget, or, uh, exclusion got passed, um, but then there was the other debt exclusion that we probably could've done a better job communicating with as there was a lot of miscommunication, um, and misinformation going on, um, regarding that on, um, on social media. Uh, this year's budget, I think, is a lot more straightforward, but we're also gonna have a lot of questions, you know, really regarding the costs, uh, and, you know, what people might see as a cost overrun, and in, in how much it's costing to, you know, send kids out of district, and, you know, just all, you know, the four major drivers we really have this year, the, the, um, out-of-district, the healthcare, you know, regular turnover, excuse me, um, or cola increase, and I forget the fourth, but, but, you know, there will be some questions. And, yes, and so I was just gonna say the SRO, and I know that we've seen a little bit of interest in that SRO, in, in what exactly that, that position's going to entail. So, um, you know, which we don't know yet, we haven't created, um, you know, the position in, in, you know, as far as Chief Stevens was concerned, or, you know, came in here and said to us that, that really comes down to what Dr. Harvey in, you know, puts together about what, what he wants out of an SRO, uh, within our district, and in what that entails. Excuse me, um, and I definitely understand the sort of public outcry, the initial public outcry of, of having, you know, they just see it as a, an armed guard in our high school, but, um, you know, as Chief Stevens really stated, that, that's not the case, or not necessarily the case. Um, you know, whereas it's a case-by-case basis. So I think it's really imperative that we do a good job of getting word out there of what an SRO is, can be, um, and is not, right? And, and because I think, um, I, I feel pretty comfortable speaking for everyone at the table in that we don't want an armed guard at our high school. So, um, I, I really see that as being one of the key things that we need to think about, communicating over the next month, month and a half, month, five weeks, is it five weeks?
Are you saying that the, the committee as a whole doesn't, would not allow an armed police officer to be at the school?
No, I'm saying that the role of an SRO, when some people I know that, um, some inquiries that I've seen that have come in through emails and just other people talking, they're just wondering if it's an armed guard standing at the door at the high school, which is not, and which, you know, none of us.
That's not the point.
Again, I, I, I'll speak for myself, I, I would never in a thousand years approve, approve that. Um, but having a, um, officer come in and help build the community relations with the, uh, children actually help teach some help, uh, in safety courses, that they'd be, um, you know, obviously appropriately trained in is something, uh, a valuable asset that a, an SRO could add to the district. So it's, it's important to really differentiate that to people. And, and that's what was proposed to us by Chief Stevens as to, um, coming up with, uh, you know, memo of understanding when put, putting together what that job description's gonna be.
When would we get, if this gets approved, when would we get a job description, or when are we gonna know? And is, Mike, do you have some idea of what you want for an SRO?
Yeah, so, um, there's, there's a sample memorandum of understanding that the state put together. So, um, Joe Demelwitz actually sent me a copy of that last week, and so I've been looking at it since Monday, and we're gonna, you know, mark it up and pass it back and forth, and that'll be the, ultimately, the, the agreement that outlines the roles and responsibilities of the, of the SRO. And we've also started to pass around a, a financial agreement document as well. Uh, but again, I got it Monday, so I haven't really looked at it.
In what, I'm sorry?
I, I received it Monday, so we haven't really done anything with it yet.
And it would, and where that would be, an agreement between the town and the school commi, and the school district, the school committee would approve it anyway, cause it's an intermunicipal agreement.
Uh, the AMA, yes. Trying to see what they said.
And when would we, when are you looking to bring it to the school committee?
Haven't even thought about it yet.
Okay.
Honestly.
Mike, have you thought about doing any kind of flyer like you did last year, uh, for this year's budget?
That's, that's kinda what I think this agenda item is to talk about, tell me what you wanna do, and.
Cause I thought that was.
David, David did the flyer, but.
Oh, okay, well, the flyer was nice and concise and.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm wondering if, and obviously it'll go by whatever the committee feels would be best if, if something, um, to that extreme would be necessary. I, I don't know how, what everyone else is hearing, um, from the community. Excuse me, I, I personally, like I said, the only real question I've, I've hounded, uh, I'm sorry, I've answered, um, and it's only been in a couple, I don't even think three, maybe only two, two cases, was really just questioning, um, the, the school resource officer and, and what that entails. Excuse me, so i- i- it's just a matter of, you know, we know, actually I didn't see the FinCom, the last couple of FinCom meetings, so I'm not sure where Wenham is right now, but what they're putting forward.
They're at town hall meeting.
So, you know, a- as, as we heard last, two weeks ago, four weeks ago, two, I just, I'll, I'll blurt it out now. But, you know, Alex initially stating that they were gonna present, uh, at the, you know, at the, at the town meeting about, um, it being a school-only override, which obviously we know the importance of doing that. We had a really good turnout last year in Wenham, so we wanna make sure, um, we get that again and, and really talk to all our, our Wenham peeps and make sure they're, they're in the house and they know what, what we're doing. You know, but again, so to what level do we need to do that? Is it something that we can, you know, break off individually and actually just, um, you know, uh, fan out and, and use our just personal resources and, and do that? Or do we want to, uh, come up with some sort of communication plan as a committee?
Well, I'll, I'll say, I think it's, I think it's worth doing a public education campaign around two specific items, the SRO and then also the, um, uh, special ed services. Uh, cause I think those, those are two that are probably less well-understood. You can factor in OPEB, but I don't think you can actually explain OPEB.
I don't either.
Well, enough.
No.
Right, so I think if we stick to those two, right, so I think, so I think the first thing is sort of like, do we wanna do a public education campaign? I sort of feel like it's worth it, right? There's just, there's an opportunity to sort of use, um, at least with the Hamilton side, you know, I, I, again, I made a commitment to, um, the FinCom and at least the FinCom Chair, and then the Board of Selectmen, uh, Chair to, to, um, participate in their meetings as needed, uh, to help educate them. And they've, I think they sort of feel that, um, if this is a budget they can get behind, that they'll, I don't wanna speak for them, but that they would be, um, supportive of, and that could be publicly stated too, right? We added in items that they wanted, so that's, it's worth something. So, um, so I think there's an opportunity to sort of, like, use the other bodies who would be present at the town meeting. I can't speak to Wenham, I'm a Wenham resident, and I didn't pay that much attention to that side, so. But, um, I think it's worth putting together a public education ca- campaign and doing another mailing.
I agree with Jean, I think it's important that we, uh, do a public informational campaign around those two items because they're, the questions that we're gonna get. I also think that the, the mailer helps us, uh, speak with one voice as a committee.
Yeah, I mean, the other, the other, the early a- aspect of it too is that when I presented the, um, when I defended the school committee's budget at the Hamilton Town Meeting, I mean, there's, it was, it was difficult to do because it was, there was so much, uh, misinformation already out there, and it's, it's just very hard to sort of call it back. You know what I mean? Especially in that kind of environment. So I think trying to educate as much as we can, the ju, the public about, uh, what's in the budget, what's driving the budget, um, at least in terms of a cost side, uh, I think would be helpful, that's my thoughts.
I was just thinking, in the Wenham warrant, I know there's like a letter from the FinCom Chair. Did, Dr. Harper, do you usually prepare a letter that goes into the warrant book that explains the budget?
No, we don't specifically.
So, I'm wondering if they would allow that.
We ask that question every year.
I mean, there certainly have been stuffers in the past by people against school budgets. I don't know if you're possibly get a letter actually published in, you know what I mean? Like, cause there is a letter in there that explains it, the FinCom, and I'm, I don't even know if there's a, there might be one from the Board of Select, but it would be nice if there was some sort of narrative allowed.
It was really, it, it's due tomorrow, that's why.
Is that?
Cause it's due tomorrow.
Yep.
Well, the, I do know that last night they closed the warrant, but I know that the Wenham Selectmen have not
What I'm saying is any, from, from Jackie Brezner, any materials that would like to be included in the warrant book are due February twenty eighth. So we sent them the, the slide deck that we normally, that we presented here two weeks ago, so that's already in the book.
Okay, so, so there is something in there.
Yeah, there, and that's there every year.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe just, well, looking forward.
Is Wenham moving forward with like presenting the override on their side as school only? Or is that, has it been settled?
Uh, so I did not watch it, but I did, so the affordable housing, I had to go to. Um, Catherine Harrison is also on that as the, whatever, and she said that there were some issues with some of the CPC things, the, and that they had to get some clarification from their lawyers so that it wasn't finalized yet, so.
So they'll be discussing it probably tonight.
So they'll probably, well, no, not tonight, probably discuss it whenever they meet again.
I'm just curious.
So, um, yeah.
Cause I don't think Hamilton has set their warrant. Maybe they have, I don't know. They, they might have, I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm a little angry about the schedule, but I remember last year,
Yeah.
Dr. Harvey, and then I presented at the, at the Board of Selectmen meeting where they set the, I just thought that we'd be asking.
Well, and Hamilton does it differently, like, Hamilton has this like little teeny thing they, they send out in the mail, and then you pick up your information at the meeting.
Yes.
Wenham publishes like a book like this, and it's handed out by the little boy scouts to your doors.
Yeah, so there's a lot of.
It's a bigger process in Wenham than it is in Hamilton, but, um, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Mayberry lives on, down here in the south.
And the way they split out everything is a lot different, Hamilton and Wenham are different.
Right.
Really different.
Yeah, like, we don't vote the salary table the way you vote the salary table, and it's different.
Okay, I'll judge you.
Which is weird, cause it's.
You vote in a budget, and you can, you know, basically put a stop on a line item and then question it.
Yeah.
But you're not going through line by line by line pulling things out.
Like, you guys don't do that, but we do.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we, we are crazy.
Is that why you lost the courtroom last time?
No. No, that's not.
Okay, so anyways, let's go back to the public education campaign, like, I guess, like, do we wanna, just trying to keep the. Like, I guess, like, do we wanna, just trying to keep the...
Well, you might wanna have...
Do we wanna do that?
You might wanna have something you put on the seats in Wenham. And in Hamilton, something that's on the table that people pick up.
Now, that's an idea.
Right, do you, are you seeing that as in addition to a mailer or...
Let me just do that.
I don't know.
What do you?
I think definitely you wanna have that at the town meeting, cause...
Yeah, that, do we do that? My deck, my deck is always available.
Yeah, but...
Your what?
My presentation is always available.
No, but just like something that's, like, really short that if I were like, mm...
Bullet points type thing.
Illiterate, I could read it in two seconds.
Very much bullet points, because people have short attention spans on that.
Or a graph.
Can you do infographic?
We're doing X because of Y, for Z reasons.
And I, and, you know, if we're doing a mailing, again, there's a whole group that did not receive it last year.
Right.
And I know that if it's then with the water bill, not everybody gets a water bill from the same town.
We, we, we did it, it wasn't through the water bill, we did, we did a direct mailing through the post office. So if they didn't, they didn't deliver it, they didn't deliver it.
We should address that with them, cause if you paid for it, like, I didn't get one.
And Wenham, at least sixty-five homes did not get it. And I don't know, plus just, I know my whole neighborhood did not get a mailing at all.
That's weird, cause I got two of them.
There you go.
No, I know, I know like my neighbor across the street got it, but I didn't get it, so, you know.
Um, wouldn't mind doing that if...
How much did that cost?
Have to find out.
Jeff would love the answer to that.
Couple hundred bucks for the printing and...
Maybe a couple thousand for the mailing.
Was it that much for the mailing?
Have to find out.
But it was, it was short money.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't a lot.
Are you thinking of the mailing, of the, of the, if we do a, if we do a, um, a piece at town meeting, are you thinking of that as factual or in advocacy kind of thing? Or are you seeing them as both?
I think it's a little bit of both, because you have to, cause the advocacy is gonna come from factual, uh, statements. Our budget's increased by X for Y reasons. We think this is the best budget we can put together.
The opposition doesn't have to use facts.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, there's...
We should be fact-driven.
Exactly.
Well, I'm just thinking that the text should, my thought is that the text would be from the committee. Right, cause this is our budget that we're presenting.
I, I think we need to, um, sort of figure out what the main, the main points we wanna communicate through are, no, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna do a little project management here. Treat you guys like clients for a second. What the main points we wanna put on are, um, how we wanna visualize them. And then if we wanna do a backside, cause there's not as much information we need to do as last year, we can put together a, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty-word little write-up that explains things a little bit more in-depth. I mean, if we did an eight and a half by eleven, I can actually fit like five-hundred words on there. But, um, you know, somewhere i- in that line. And then, you know, who's gonna pick which items we're gonna communicate through? And then who's gonna put together that little, um, write-up?
Um, and then I have, so, so generally, there's been a different document posted on our district website that explains the budget that has some more narrative in it. When will that be available? Or how?
It's usually towards, uh, third week in March by the time we get it done. I mean, we're just gonna ramp up this week to get it going.
I, I think we...
That won't really be...
You're talking the budget book.
Helpful.
We wanna have the same speech with different voices, right? I, I think, um, if we're gonna do this, we should be putting this together, uh, through a school committee voice and let Mike and Jeff put together, um, things from an official, um, administration voice. And that way you're, you're really, um, hitting both sides of, of the coin. I, I, that, I think that would be the most effective way to, to utilize something like this.
So are you looking to put together a subcommittee or are you gonna do it through committee meetings or...
We can put together a subcommittee and spend a month trying to actually figure out when we can meet or we can just sort of accept roles and move on. I already said it, look to get, you know, put together the infographic and everything from anyone, but I think we just need to sort of figure out what the, you know, we know what the key drivers are, come up with some, um, you know, short verbiage for that and then just sort of pick someone to, um, outline.
So are we think, so, so it sounds like we're, we're, we're coming to consensus about a mailer? Isn't it something at town meeting? So two pieces?
I don't think they could be, I don't think they need to be independent. I think they can...
Same thing, okay, alright.
Nice and easy.
Yeah, I don't think they need to be the two separate documents, but they could be...
Printing the two-hundred more you need for both town meetings would be forty bucks.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, basically...
Well, are you gonna send them in Hamilton?
What's that?
Are you gonna send them to Hamilton residents also?
Yeah, I mean, the budget drivers are the budget drivers, just they wouldn't have any need to know about the Wenham override. They would know that Wenham is...
Can't talk about the override, I'm sorry.
Right, but i- if Wenham, they wouldn't need to pay attention to things that only concern Wenham.
Right.
So, so it would go to both, email, it would be mailed to both towns? I'd be interested in knowing the cost, it just seems like...
Oh, were you thinking only of Wenham?
Well, when you said two-thousand dollars, I could be like, oh yeah, that definitely see. But having seen some campaign, and maybe we get a different rate at the post office.
Yeah, I mean, that was what the, the bulk mailing was not, was not much more than that.
Right, and that was an eight and a half by eleven.
Oh, that was the amount for the bulk mailing, the two-thousand dollars.
The printing was only a couple hundred dollars.
And the printing was a couple hundred dollars.
Right.
But that only went to Wenham last year, correct?
No, went to both towns.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah, Hamilton got it.
Those both towns.
Okay, alright, alright, alright.
I don't know how many people missed it, got it, or who was missing it.
Well, it doesn't matter, because we paid for them.
We paid for both towns.
Yeah.
But I mean, you know, this is the type of info, I posted it on my school committee, you know, website. That, what's the graphics or, you know, we can email it, we can post it, you know, all over the place. And, you know, it, it, people are there to see it.
So are you looking for ideas or content or...
Yeah, I think that's where we are now, is, um, figuring that out.
Well, I think doing like a, um, uh, if you take one of those slide, the, the, there's a slide in the budget presentation about, um, all the costs, like what makes up the total school budget, right? So you could do like a, um, a pie chart with all the, all the pieces, right? And then you could, yeah, you could explode out the...
Where those things are.
Yeah, out of school tuition, the SRO, OPEB, something like that, I don't know.
The four major drivers.
Yeah, in the back, the text could be, I'm just thinking, you're the designer, but the, more text obviously on the back or some, I don't know. I was just thinking.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, so obviously I'll use that, I'll go by that slide. I know the slide you're talking about with the four main drivers.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, put together a blurb on there. I'll, like I said, I'll pick up that whole front piece. And if someone just wants to write a, you know, more detailed yet concise, um, piece for the back, drop that in there. Like I said, we're looking at a page, two, you know, one to page, page and a half. Once I move it in, you know, I can, like I said, I could probably get about five-hundred words on, on there to be read comfortably.
Yep.
So it wouldn't be anything in excess of that. Don't all raise your hands at once.
Well, I think the, the challenge is sort of who has the best command of, of the SRO and the out-of-school tuition to be able to explain it, right, succinctly. I can't say that I do. I'd be willing to try, but I don't think I could.
I don't, I, obviously I wouldn't mind helping anyone edit whatever they needed to. I just don't wanna pick up the whole project.
Yeah, yeah, until I get that part.
You know, and then, and then I know, you know, obviously, we'll run it through Jeff too, who will help.
Yeah.
Explain anything that he thinks is a little fuzzy.
Yep.
He's not here, so we get to volunteer him.
Let that be a lesson to you all, right?
Yeah, it's a missing meaning. I could, I could take a step at the SRO, like a, you know, like a paragraph, quick paragraph on the SRO. But I, I, like I said, I don't have the, I don't have a good command on the nuances of the out-of-school tuition.
Of the out-of-school tuition? Really? I think that's the easiest one.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Alright.
That's, that's really cut and dry. That's the law.
So why don't we split the project in half? Gene can do the SRO and David can do the, the added district tuition.
I'm here. You can't volunteer me if I'm here.
I think I just did.
So, alright, I could do, i- if you want me, I could, I could do it, add a district tuition. OOT.
Do you want me to summarize OPEB for you right now? Vote for people who support single payer healthcare and you don't have to do this.
Okay, we can, we can wordsmith that one a little bit.
That is actually an article I'm marking up. Just how many times you end up paying for healthcare.
That might be a little bit of a con...
I mean, that's really, that's really the tricky one, cause it's not even...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause...
It's very wonky.
Right, and...
But it would be okay to say, what are other post-employment benefits? Healthcare, bone.
Well, you know, honestly, Je- I mean, again, I don't wanna like volunteer Jeff here, but he had, you know, he had a, uh, it's an obligation or, someone in the FinCom actually said it, like, there's an obligation for, that the committee commit, or the district committed to, we have employees who retire. I mean, ultimately, that's what it is.
But it's not a pension, it's really...
Yeah, post-employment benefits, the name itself suggests things, yeah.
The health insurance portion of retirement.
But there's a reason why this year...
Excuse me?
There's a reason why this year, there's a law change that...
There's a, accounting standards change, yes.
Um, yeah, but it's how much do we wanna get into the weeds on this?
That's, that's...
Because we, the seven of us had had multiple presentations on this right now and, you know, we're sitting here talking about how difficult it is to still explain out, right? So now try and do that in a hundred-and-twenty-five words.
Well, I mean, there, there is a new, there's a new law that I don't think takes very much, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think that might be a little more in the weeds than you need to, because it's...
Okay.
Resources, I'm, I'm not saying, what, I'm not, I don't mean to be shooting you down, uh, idea why. I'm just trying to say, you know, trying to think of what it's gonna take to get somebody to just understand what this expenditure is, cause it is a large expenditure and it's going to be a large expenditure on our books for the next thirty years. So, you know...
Well, it's not an acronym that's been, not been heard at a town meeting before. I mean, both towns have authorized OPEB trust accounts and they've put nominal amounts of money in them. So, I mean, it's people who go to town meeting have heard the acronym before.
Both in Hamilton and Wenham have heard of it.
It's easy to just explain to them, these are benefits, mostly healthcare, that have been earned by employees but will be paid to them when they retire, over the course of their retirement. And you're saving now to pay for them later. I mean, that's, pretty much I did it, Eric Stone.
Yeah, that's bad.
It's in the minutes. Cut it and paste it.
Wash the tape.
We have Mahala doing all the back of the...
I have faith in you a hundred percent. You do very good at concise writing.
Alright, so I think we have a plan here. We'll, we'll meet, we'll put this right back on the agenda for next week, uh, not next week, two weeks. I'm a creative, I need hard deadlines, so I can do it ten minutes before we come into the meeting. But we'll get this, we'll get something to look at and then go from there, do some editing at the table and...
As your client, I'm hoping we're gonna see it on the Friday before, so there's your deadline.
Ask my client so many times, I disappoint them.
Do you want me to, do you want me to type what I said? I'm happy to type what I said.
Yeah, that, that would be great, cause the, the reality is if, if you send me something, it'll get me moving on it and I'll probably do this Friday, to be honest with you.
And Gene, you send something, then there he goes.
I mean, that's really what it means.
It won't be this Friday, I'll tell you that much. It won't be this Friday.
No, but, but, to be in the Dropbox, it would be by next Friday, so it would be like, if you wrote it over the weekend or, you know, Monday night, you're kicking back.
Right.
Not on Facebook, doing whatever.
Come on Instagram though.
Pictures of you writing.
Yes, sir. Okay, cool.
Alright, um, moving on. The office personnel contract, I reached out to, um, Naomi to find out about this because we put ourselves, or the school committee was put at risk of actually, um, being in danger of having a, um, fair labor complaint filed against us in... You know, one, one thing that really kinda bothers me is that, looking back in the minutes, even though a couple, uh, school committee members and I know Jeff, all have notes that this was discussed at January, the eight, uh, January eighteenth, uh, January two thousand and eighteen executive session, we can't see any explicit, um, authority given to negotiate this contract in those minutes. But even if that was picked up before the last meeting, which it was, because it was brought out as soon as we mentioned the contract, you know, in our school committee protocols, you know, it actually says that, you know, it works both ways. If you find out information that's, you know, you're gonna bring up at the meeting, that it should be brought up, have been brought up prior or dropped in the Dropbox prior. That way, we could have actually acted as a, um, committee to say, okay, you know what, there's an oversight here. Let's vote to actually fix this oversight, rather than, you know, like I said, putting us now in danger of, um, you know, a, a suit against us. And the blame, you know, could be tried to be pushed back and forth, but, you know, um, the reality is, and as, you know, our, the school committee's attorney agreed, the fact that the contracts have always been negotiated by the superintendent and the, um, and, you know, Jeff, the assistant superintendent, really give them de facto rights. And, you know, I know from looking myself, the MASC is pretty vague about it being, oh, it's very vague.
Well, no, we, it's the school committee authorized it only in the last couple, three years. Before that, there's always been school commit, that's why we have negotiations subcommittee that works to help negotiate these contracts. And actually, when we reached out and saw a lot of, um, conversations asking about contracts, they said that there's always been the superintendent, school committees, uh, members and a lawyer involved with negotiations. And as far as this contract, you know, we asked, we have not had any conversation of where we want to direct this contract to be in the very beginning. It should've gone into executive session to say, this is what we feel. This contract to be in the very beginning. It should have gone into executive session to say, this is what we feel, because I do have. When I look back on the minutes.
So I just want to say, you're, you're actually arguing with the decision our lawyer made.
No, what, well, this is what I would say. There was no way for me to inform you. That I, that I didn't believe that we had given that authorization, because I had no way of knowing that that was happening. Until, until it popped into the Dropbox and on our agenda. There would, we'd not, we've never had an update, we've never met an executive session to see if any of the terms were in line with what we wanted to do. We're following a completely different process than we followed for the teacher's contract. We met in executive session to discuss the terms. Then we asked the, a union to approve it and then we authorized it. So. You know, do, do I think there has been some misunderstanding and that just needs to be rectified? I absolutely think that, but to say that. Because one school committee authorized Jeff and Mike to negotiate a contract. That therefore forever that says that is the case is just, I can't believe that to be true.
So, I mean.
We did not give a blanket authorization for all three contracts. It was only the teacher's contract. And we never even gone back, because I don't, after what happened recently, I would feel uncomfortable. Voting in a contract when I haven't even seen any of the contract, the contract, old and new or comparison of what they want. I don't want to general, these are bullet points, because I want to see what I'm gonna approve. And we really should be looking at it. We should have been in executive session to discuss kind of the parameters.
So, again, the agenda was put in by at least the Friday before our last meeting, as was the notes. At that point, you did have time, as you've asked for it to be Friday, we have until Monday, to then ask. Can we put the wording in of the entire contract? Alright, and the fact that you had gone through the minutes to see. That we didn't do that showed that you had prior knowledge and were, was bringing that to the table.
That is true, but I did it one hour prior to our meeting, so.
You just sent an email. You just sent an email ten minutes before the meeting.
Exactly.
So, that could have been done two weeks ago also.
Okay, so I found out that I needed to go to that meeting, uh, just maybe forty minutes before I came. And as you will notice, that email that I got from Dorothy Presser came in today, so I could not have done that. I talked to her yesterday, it came in today. How could I have sent it to you last week?
I understand that's how things happen, right? So, that's not the email I'm talking about. What I'm saying is, at this last one, you. An email could have been sent out, hey, I noticed going through these minutes, that we never actually formally, uh, authorized this. This is something we should actually do. So, again, the first thing that, you know.
Okay, I'll spend time looking stuff up in minutes and emailing you before I come to meetings from now on.
Looking at things up in minutes to drop it on us during the meeting anyway.
I'm not an employee, I'm at my job. The time I have to do it is when I leave my job and come home. Between dinner and a meeting. I have an hour to do it. I'm sorry, I did not send it to you in advance. I didn't have it in advance.
You actually just said that you looked through the minutes in advance.
Yes, I did, before I came to the meeting. Literally, the minutes I came to the meeting.
And we still don't have, as, as we voted in last meeting, we still don't have a copy of the contract.
So, herein lies a problem, okay? Now, we have.
Nor have we met in an executive session to discuss the terms, nor have we decided if this is even what we want to do. Nor, as far as I know, has our union approved it.
So, alright, the union has approved it, and actually, the union is.
That would have been nice to have in the packet on Friday to know.
So, well, a- and again, the first line from Attorney Stromberg was. That I believe de facto authorization was granted to negotiate the clerical agreement, because the superintendent for the past several contracts is negotiated. The non-professional contracts after a teacher's contract has settled.
No, no, it hasn't been the past couple of contracts. For the teachers, yes, but.
Of the school committee's counsel.
I find it odd that the school committee's counsel can tell us what we voted, when we never voted.
So, it's saying de facto.
What we voted in, has she?
Did she receive copies of the minutes?
And, but we haven't even seen a contract. Why should we vote in a contract? It, you should have had an executive session for us to negotiate what the terms are. That is part of the school committee's job, is to, if we're gonna vote something in, we need the information. We can't just give a blanket. Yes, vote and do whatever.
So, a- at this point, at this point, after speaking with Naomi, after speaking, um, with Mike. Uh, I believe that we, as a, uh, committee, should vote to grant Jeff and Mike. Negotiating power for this, so that we can actually avoid a, um, suit against the school committee. For unfair labor practices.
I agree. There was a mistake made and the mistake needs to be rectified and we're really have our backs up against the wall. That the only way to do that is to vote, to authorize them to be the negotiators. I totally agree. That's all we had to do. But instead, it has to be like a witch hunt on the people who are trying to follow a process, that we only do things that we authorize.
And also get the information that we asked for, instead of just approve what the.
Do you need a motion for that?
We need a motion for that.
Okay, did we prepare a motion for that? Since our lawyer has told us what to do, did she prepare something?
She did not. All we need to do is grant them negotiating power, and while we're at it, we should do that.
Just a sec, just a secretary's.
Approve a contract without even.
Allowing them to negotiate on behalf of the committee to negotiate these two contracts. That's all we're doing.
Uh, why do we have to do both? Is the other one done?
No, just the secretaries, just the office personnel.
So, herein lies, well.
Just, just do the office personnel.
Does someone want to make a motion?
I move that we grant the superintendent and the assistant superintendent authority to negotiate the contract on behalf of the super, of the. Office personnel.
Second.
All those in favor? Six opposed, abstaining. So, there is a second part to this.
But so, so. I will get everybody a full copy of the con, the office personnel contract redlined for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, up next on the agenda is the custodial contract. So, this is the second problem we have, because. Um, at this point. We don't have anyone to negotiate this contract, and I have been contacted multiple times by representatives from. Uh, the custodians' union about who is going to actually, um, negotiate this contract. Because all scheduled meetings were canceled after our last meeting by Mike and Jeff and, um. So, we have to decide as a committee how we want to go about negotiating this contract.
I would like to leave it in Mike and Jeff's capable hands.
No, thank you.
Please.
I would like for the negotiating subcommittee to meet with Dr. Harvey and Jeff to negotiate it with the custodians. That, to me, is why we have a negotiating working group.
I agree, and I would second Michelle's motion.
I didn't make a motion, I made a suggestion.
Suggestion.
I'm not thoroughly convinced that our administration team feels comfortable. Negotiating another contract at this time. And I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but.
On our own, absolutely. You're, you're right. Um, however, it is part of my job responsibility to assist the school committee in negotiations. And I will, I will do that, um, but I will not take it as on our own again.
And I just want to throw a little caveat out there for everyone else to, at the table to think about. We, they actually were in the middle of negotiations. Or, sorry, watch my wording. But, um, with the long, in discussions with Long Meadow, that again, I am not sure. They are comfortable moving forward anymore with negotiations, with negotiations.
Let's stick with the custodians. I think Long Meadow is a different question entirely.
I was gonna say, that was completely authorized.
Yeah, I'd also think, though, you're gonna want some continuity there and I won't be here through the whole process, so, that's something you want to think about.
I think that's why Dave and.
Now I understand what you're saying.
Uh, yeah, I mean, this, this is something that will go through to the fall and I won't be here for it, so.
I think that's why Dave and Jean are part of that.
Excuse me?
I think that, uh, if I'm mistaken, I thought you and Jean were part of those discussions for Long Meadow.
They haven't been, let me think. I think you want to bring some more people into that process.
Right.
But I, I would suggest we stick with the custodians first, because that's the pressing one right now. And that's what's on the agenda.
I just sort of need to make it clear, the repercussions. Excuse me, um. Alright, so, I guess we have to make a motion at this point about. Adding, um, the negotiating committee to work with the administration. And moving forward with this custodian's contract, which is gonna be very tough, because. They work in, they, but these negotiators are in the middle of the, in the middle of the workday. Whereas some of the other.
That's when we were doing it, but, I mean, that's not, doesn't have to be that way.
Yeah, I mean, negotiations is usually something that the union people do not during their work hours. You know what I mean? So if the custodians are working during the day when school is open, then they wouldn't be negotiating during the day when the school is open.
A representative would be, is, it's part of their job. Every negotiation they ever had with the union at Massport was during business hours.
Well, we usually do it after the first shift ends, so, that's what, which is usually early after, you know, early afternoons.
Um, alright.
So, I think we should make a motion.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Does it make any difference that after the election, there could be a shift in the subcommittees regarding the members? And who's there now and who may not, who may or may not be there?
Affect that, yeah.
I'm assuming that we aren't gonna finalize this contract before.
Right, well, I mean, it's Eugene and I, so if I don't get reelected, at least the majority of the subcommittee would be able to.
Yeah.
Move forward to see it out.
Two of you.
Yeah, okay.
To continue the.
If we are nominated to the negotiates, new negotiations subcommittee for next term.
Yes. Correct.
Right?
Or you could, or you could just say that you could have like a special one that was just for the, you know what I mean? If you didn't want to be on negotiations for like another year, we could just say to continue out that contract and then have a different negotiations subcommittee, probably.
I, I don't know, that's why I asked.
The issue you raised is why we started having Mike and Jeff do it.
Or we, or we could form a new negotiations subcommittee specific to this task now.
I'm not comfortable with that.
I'm, I'm good with, so what do you want the motion to be about?
Move ahead, that we have the negotiating committee work with the administration on.
Go with what we have in place right now.
I move that the Hamilton-Wanham School Committee, uh, authorize the negotiating subcommittee and to work with the administration. To negotiate a contract for the janitorial union.
For the, for the who?
Custodial union.
Custodial?
Do we even need that motion? Because isn't that.
But it.
I don't think you do.
Yeah, let's cover our bases, because this is a problem that we've had, so I second her motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, I'll second. So, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Next up, so we heard on Monday officially that Mike is leaving. Um, obviously. We had Dr. Harvey under contract within the district until next July, so really making any sort of. Movement before he officially decided to leave would have been premature. Borderline illegal? So, but I, um, did reach out to the MASC last week and, um. Spoke with Glenn Kuchar, who had sent over, um, some paperwork. About really what to begin thinking about when a superintendent leaves, and then, um, after I spoke with Mike on Monday. And, um, got, you know, got word that, official word that he was leaving. I asked Donna to drop this into the, um, you know, box for the agenda, had this to the agenda tonight. So, we can really begin moving forward. In the discussions, you know, very high level, very preliminary, preliminary. You know, questions that I had for the, you know, process is really, from my understanding. And it's something that we have to obviously come to a consensus with as a committee. You know, really beginning to put together a, uh, a search committee, but also thinking about the fact that we are now past. Sort of the prime hiring stage for July one, so in our reality, we're probably looking at putting. A, um, temporary superintendent in place. And then begin a process, you know, to have them in place on July one to help the, just, just continue. Uh, on course until we can actually begin the pro, the process, the process at the proper time after. You know, like I said, I've had, I have some ideas, but that's getting the sort of horse, car before the horse. You know, but to actually be able to go into the prime season next year, see if we can actually find a candidate. That we like enough to hire for the full-time position, right? I think it's also. We can't safely assume that we will find an ideal candidate, um, right off the bat. I, I think that, um, that, you know, to, to find someone great and deserving of leading. This district i- is gonna be difficult, um, and, you know, and like I said, I think. We are in a great place. I think Dr. Harvey is leaving us in a great place, but at the same time, I do believe that there are very large shoes to fill. And we, as a community and as a committee, have to think about what we want looking forward. Because I don't want a repeat of the, you know, late aughts, early, you know, tens in here. Where we're just rolling through superintendents that aren't gonna work. We're gonna take the time, hopefully. And find the right person for the job who's going to be here for an extended period of time and, you know, again, lead this district. Forward from where we are, um, you know, it, it's tough, don't, in, in, in. If, if you're not moving forward in education, you're moving backwards. There's no such thing as standing still, right? We know we have out of district placements that are, you know, becoming unsustainable. And any and all programs we'd be looking at, at, um, trying to curb those are now on hold. So, that means for the next two to three years, we're, we're sort of in a holding pattern as we get someone new in here. They get up to speed and they can begin moving forward, and I just feel that it's really important that everybody. And I just feel that it's really important that everybody hears that and understands what that really means and what that entails. So, you know, this is pretty good. I will be honest, I did not, I got this over vacation, so I thumb-fruited a few times, but I haven't nailed a lot down. But I really think that coming in here tonight, we should really be thinking about putting together a representing, representative crew of probably who's gonna lead the search process and really start getting all of that into place. I think that it's going to entail members of the community, you know, obviously teachers, administrators, everything like that. But there needs to be a clear person in charge to actually, to lead this. So, I think that's where we are right now.
I think the finding somebody for July 1st and, and finding people to sit on the committee to do the larger search are two different things. As the person who comes in on July 1st is probably going to be chosen by this body, as the person who comes in to fill Dr. Harvey's enormous shoes is, could be chosen, chosen by, you know, the six people sitting here and three new people or two new people. And so, I just think that we should, those are two different things.
Yeah, and I also think we should be looking at hiring someone that assists us, like...
Oh, yeah, that's part of, that's part of the process, right? Is really, I know the MASC helps with the process, you know, there's, they give a list of like some, of headhunters that do this, that really help, you know, but what happened, before you sort of get into that is you start, we need to come up with a list of search criteria for them to even go off of.
But before that, we need to decide to have a plan of what we're gonna do.
That's what I said, is really putting together a list.
You said, "search criteria."
No, 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 I think, yeah, I know what you're saying, but I think, I think what I just heard you say is that we are thinking that we're gonna have an interim and then we're gonna have a search.
That's what I said.
Alright, so I think what we need, so you think we need a criteria for the interim?
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously, I think it could be a shorter process, you know, looking at regional district office, obviously, right, and, you know...
Right, because you usually hire...
Obviously, trying, hopefully, hopefully someone that's coming from a, you know, top quintile district. You know, someone who can come in here, really kind of understands the community, understands, you know, the nuances of what it is walking in this door. Because it's very different than walking into Ipswich, it's very different than walking into Beverly. So, you know, but I think that could be a really short, short punch list, as opposed to...
Several superintendents who are retired to live close by.
So, I know the MASC sort of has, or there's, there's some lists going around of people like this. So, if we came up with a shorter, but I, again, I think it really starts with, we need someone to run this show.
Yeah. What do you, what do you mean by that? A search firm?
There's a lot, no, someone for here, tonight, who should be walking out of here, sort of figuring out what next steps are, putting together, you know, it's starting that list so that we're moving. You know, coming up and sort of discussing at the table, oh, should we be hiring a search firm out of this? It's, you know, here's what has to happen, you know, and just starting to put together, you know, a base camp of, you know, finding an interim, you know, and obviously the two schools, finding an interim, finding long-term, what that means, putting together search, you know, canvassing for outside people who are actually would be interested from the community, who would wanna come in and search for a new superintendent. Coming up with the, with that criteria of what you're looking for. Also, you know, looking at, you know, who we're gonna get in the door. Do we want them in here June 1 or July 1, right? Do we want a little bit of a crossover, things like that? That stuff that can't wait two weeks.
I mean, I, I didn't see this in the Dropbox on Friday, so I...
This wasn't Friday, I couldn't have put this in until...
I know, so I called Dorothy myself to find out and I'm, I would be, if this committee wants, I'm happy to work with Dorothy Presser to have her come, present how we could go through an interim and then we could work with the MASC just for the interim. And then, then we can decide, once that is rolling while we're looking for the interim, then we can decide what kind of search committee we want, or what do I wanna call that? Search firm we want? They usually, when you, because I went through this when we hired the town administrator, they come in and they help you to define all of those things. Like you were talking about, like what are the criteria, what are the, who should be on the screening? How should you organize it? And they'll even actually help you with the questions and...
Yeah, that, that sounds like a good idea, because I do know that MASC has been doing some good work with search, searches. And I know in the past, we've had issues with some of the outside consultants.
Dorothy also mentioned that, you know, because there's now two committees really close by whose superintendents might have had to leave really suddenly, that would be good for us to move this along maybe, because we could be in competition.
So, we're really not, because, again, we're talking about municipal districts and we're a regional district and I think that's a huge, huge differentiating point.
But I think they're going to be looking for super, interim superintendents and we're gonna be looking for an interim superintendent. And I know one's urban and one's...
So, we're, so again, I think we're looking for different people.
That may be, but we still wanna start the process now as opposed to waiting and, you know, we need to start at least with the interim and then start defining our process for what we want for the superintendent search.
I mean, I'm happy to work with Dorothy Presser and have her come at the next meeting.
Yes, it really has.
But if you wanna have somebody else do it, that's fine too. But I really think your only choice is, is to work with the MASC to get an interim.
Definitely, right, so they're key in all of this. But, you know, what you, to what you were just saying, it was actually on the list of page 2. Really just sort of saying what one of them did together. I love the...
Two of what?
Uh, two of what?
Of the MASC packet.
Oh, on page 29 then, you're talking about?
So, I just wanna know why they think a graphic designer is important early. It's like second on the list. A little respect. But really, this, you know, this really lays out a lot of the stuff we were just discussing.
So, Michelle, you're volunteering to connect with Dorothy Presser to help get the ball moving with MASC?
Yeah, and even, I mean, when I talked to her yesterday, she said, "I can't come to your meeting tomorrow, I'm already booked." I was like, "Well, I'm not authorized to even volunteer you to do that, so I wouldn't even ask you to do that." But she's like, "But I'm, I'm happy to come to the next meeting." Now, that, you know, but yeah, I'm happy to contact her, I'm happy to ask her to prepare, I don't know, something for us to look at, to potentially approve for a posting or something. Because today, so, because you guys prob, she's, I don't know why she sent this to me, but she sent this to me today and she outlined a timeline, it's two pages, that's why I'm passing it out weird like this, sorry.
Two pages?
Oh, crap. You guys have to share.
Share?
That, on the back of the second page, that, that she gave like this timeline where maybe we could have like what you were talking about, like... But it's weird already where these candidates would be interviewed and interviewed during the election. So, we kinda have this like weird hard stop in here.
We do and we don't, so while it would be ideal to have somebody from the school committee lead the search, it doesn't need to be, if, if...
Who would do it then?
No, 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 what I'm saying, I'm saying it would be really...
But I mean, you would have to take the reins, pass the election and realize that you're volunteering your time for a board you don't sit on anymore, but again, you'd then just be a community...
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying it would be, it might be weird for us to select the candidates to interview and then the next board interview the candidates, but you could, that's fine, but it, but this timeline here...
It's two months, you know, you're looking at two months from now.
No, but this timeline here, that she's kind of, and I don't think we would get it together to post it by the next meeting even. So, but it is...
Give a little faith in our ability to...
That's what I'm saying, I don't really think that's reasonable, but it does put here a possibility that we could have maybe some overlap time so that the new superintendent and Dr. Harvey might have a week together to, you know, here's where the things are and this is what's been important and these are the important people and this is how the culture works.
So, we have, and it is very much related to this, that needs to be brought up. That June 30th, we are also losing Donna Bunk.
Oh, is she retiring?
Yeah, she is retiring.
Yeah, she's retiring.
Congratulations, that's amazing!
So, but no, that is really being kicked while we're down.
I know, but it's still...
Yeah, no, very happy for her.
Good for her, she's been here a long time.
So...
But she is...
It's a lot of institutional memory that we're...
Yes.
She loses it all at once, yeah.
She has a lot of information.
So, so that's, you know, something that we really need to keep in mind with all of this also, because I, in speaking with her the other day, that came up in, you know, the dawn, the light finally went off on my head. So, I, you know, she's been speaking about retiring for a while, but I hadn't really thought about the consequences of losing her. And, you know, I mean, we've all emailed her, called, you know, she's known things right off the top of her head that she has no right knowing, so...
Dr. Harvey has wisely been having her cut a file of that institutional knowledge over the last year.
She's retired or is she moving to Massco?
Oh, no, she's retired.
But no, so that's something we definitely have to keep in, in mind during all of this also, because, yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna be big, with someone new walking in the door.
Well, I guess the question still is, does someone, is anybody else interested in volunteering to help like coordinate with, with MASC? Because that's really on the table. I don't know what else is like, I don't know whether our other options are.
Right, I mean, that's obviously the way it has to, it has to begin.
I'm, I'm willing to do it, but if people, someone else wants to do it, I'm happy to have them do it.
That'd be great if Michelle can do that. I personally feel like that would be a big help for us.
So, alright, so we're gonna get in touch, we're gonna have Michelle probably contact Dorothy and get her in here at the next meeting. Do we have room on the...
It's the 10th of March.
March 11th, right?
Can we bump it?
10th.
March 13th.
Who do we keep bumping?
March 13th.
The 10th is a Sunday.
Bumping again. The OPEB, is it the OPEB?
No, OPEB's the 27th, that we do, we have...
I'll find a way to bump them up to 27th again.
The curriculum instruction assessment program report, which is the math.
And if, and if she's not available on that date, then I would ask for someone else?
Yeah, we want someone in here.
We need to have some, we need someone for the next meeting, definitely.
And is it, okay, and then if it needs to be at 6:30, is that, I'm just asking as if it's an option for people and if it's not, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we can...
I can do 6:30.
Probably be flexible on that.
I saw a...
It's gonna be difficult for me to be here at 6:30.
I will avoid that, okay. Okay, I will let everybody know.
Okay.
Sure you don't wanna stay? Too late, alright, I tried.
Please?
I tried. Alright, too late. Alright, so last thing, nope, not last thing, I'm sorry. Next up is donations.
Alright, I was looking, trying to find the exhibit. I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee accept the donation from the Hamilton-Wenham Girls Soccer Boosters for girls soccer uniforms in the amount of $765.
All those in favor?
Thank you, girls soccer boosters. I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee accept the donation from Hamilton-Wenham Regional High School Goal Club for the boys' soccer uniforms in the amount of $834.
Megan.
All those in favor?
Thank you for the boys' soccer uniforms. I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee accept the donation from the Friends of Cutler Elementary School for the 4th grade field trip for, in the amount of $463.
All those in favor?
Thank you, Friends of Cutler.
So, yeah, thank you, everybody. Onto committee reports, policy legislative, I guess we got a little bit from you guys earlier.
That was it, we haven't met, we are meeting as we scheduled.
Just going through my notes here.
And Dorothy said she was gonna send us some stuff in advance, but we have not received that.
Oh, so you're working with Dorothy on that also?
Well, because she's our, because the other guy, Mike Gilbert, retired, she's our new rep, yeah.
I just didn't know if they had their own policy branch over there. Capital planning, finance, and turf field, how's that field coming?
So, we, the capital plan...
Rumor has it, we might be working on a plan.
So, when, we haven't met for a while and the reason for that is we still feel that there's a need for a strategic planning working group to plan out our vision for the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District, which would include the administration, school committee members, teachers, students, and citizens. And because we haven't, because there's so many things up in the air right now, we haven't been able to nail down the priority of the five-year capital plan and feel that this strategic planning working group can help figure out, we could figure out how to prioritize everything, because there are so many things that are right now in the air, such as Long Meadow.
We also felt that putting forth an additional debt exclusion is, well, if Long Meadow was going to make an appearance, that it was one or the other, that the people of Wenham could not, could not shoulder both in a single year.
Well, I think that's, we discussed that in the meeting too, so, and, you know, by bringing the stakeholders and that way we can bring together a vision for the whole school district and there, there's, and then that way it would be a lot easier to bring in debt exclusions going forward, just having a real plan and whatnot. So, that's what I think our next step should be, is voting in a strategic planning working group.
So, in conjunction with the towns or in just us?
So, it would be just us, the administration, school committee members, teachers, students, and citizens. And...
Wait, tell me, what's your proposal again? Sorry. You wanna create a strategic planning working group?
Yes, and until we get some kind of vision to figure out where we're going forward, because we also have SOIs, we have, you know, where do we want, where do we see us? Are we gonna, you know, what do we wanna put forward? And if we include the towns right now, we don't know where we're gonna be at. Are we gonna have the towns' house where we're gonna be at right now if we get the citizens? Then, after we kind of feel like we have something, then we can do it jointly with the towns.
Alright.
Because it's hard to bring anything forward, you know, in a joint meeting with the towns of what, you know, they're gonna say what they want to and their, what they need in their towns. So, that's like, you need to kind of have a plan, each group.
So, but they're, they're doing their capital lists independently that we would then bring in to... So, that's what we need to do, that's what this subcommittee should be doing.
Yep. Well, I also, well, we also... Well, that's why we're suggesting, because we do have a list that are placeholders. I did email Jeff and Mike about trying to get together to get this information several times and we had... times, and we haven't had any kind of dates.
We met in January, we went through this line by line.
No, we did not.
We did, we went through this line.
No, we did not.
We went through this line by line.
We have twenty minutes, Denise.
Alright, enough, I don't wanna get through this back and forth again, I do think we still have time before April to try and get together and really come up with a capital plan list based off our existing list, even though it keeps growing, it'll always continue to keep growing, but then to be able to bring forward to, you know, administration, because at that point, you still need a list to be able to go to administration and say, does this look good to you, what should be, you know, what has actually now moved up in priority list, you know, obviously, we were looking at, you know, safety and compliance issues last year, you know, that list is probably growing, and to be able to then move forward to the next, next stage, which would be incorporating.
Can I ask a question that may be opposite to other people, like, is the idea behind consolid, like, combining or coordinating the lists from the two towns in the district to try to find economies of scale for items on our list, is that the idea?
I wouldn't think so, I think it's so that you can.
I think it's for planning, I don't know what you're talking about, but, in my mind, in my mind, it's so that the town can only assume so much debt, overall.
Okay, so it's a financing plan?
So, it's, yeah, it's to manage the cash flow between the towns and the schools so that the debt can all be flow, flowing, instead of a new school, a new fire truck, a new water system, and a new road construction project, all coming in in one year and competing against each other, we could say, this year it's this project, next year it's the fire truck, next year it's the water truck, next year it's the school thing.
Okay, alright, I get that part, okay.
So that it would be coordinated, or maybe it's these seven things at the school, these three things in Hamilton, and these two things in Wenham, and then these five things at the school, and these two things, and then these five things.
Okay.
To me, that's what I think is needed, and I think the towns are open to it, but I don't know.
Well, they're clearly open to something, but I'm not entirely sure what the, what the.
If that's it, you're not sure that's the way.
Right, because if it's economies of scale, I don't know how you can achieve that, because there's school-specific stuff that the towns are never gonna buy.
Right.
Right, I agree.
That's why I'm saying, I don't, like, is, is that the idea?
I don't think that's the idea.
If it's a financing structure, well, that's something else.
I think it's a cash flow structure.
Yeah, okay.
Thing, yeah.
Alright, but that wasn't, that's never been articulated, in the, in the three years I've been on the school committee, when they've asked for this, well, no, I'm not saying that you, but I'm saying even when the requests come from the other towns, like, I, I still, I never, even still now, we're speculating, like, I still don't really know why we would, why to do it, other than to be collaborative and share, but like, what's the end, end goal?
That everybody.
I'm not saying we don't, we shouldn't do it.
Everybody gets what you want.
Yeah.
Right.
But, and everybody agrees that this is.
Okay.
And I know Hamilton just voted in.
Which kids getting which thing for Christmas this year and which ones not.
Well, that's the best, that's the best articulated reason I've ever heard.
Hamilton just voted in a working group to do that.
But that's fine, I mean, I'm not, I'm not objecting to the idea, I just wanna make sure, like, there's a purpose to it, because if we're just, again, if, if it's trying to find economies of scale, like purchasing, that's not gonna ever happen.
I don't think you're gonna find that.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Unless we were gonna like pave a parking lot and a road at the same time, or something weird, but even still, you have to buy the same.
But it's not, it's not gonna happen, yeah.
The hole that leads to no.
No one else is gonna buy school desks.
Right, they're not.
Exactly, so.
Maybe computer equipment, maybe, but the towns don't have that much of computer equipment compared to what we have.
Okay, anyways, alright.
So.
So, I don't know where we're at, should we contact the towns and see if they're interested in something?
So, I think that we need to be, I think we need to have an idea of where we are to be able to get with them.
I agree with that part.
So, Stacy just said that Hamilton's putting together a subcommittee, the town of Hamilton isn't going to be coming to us for, their subcommittee's not gonna be coming to us in what we're doing, until after they come up with their needs in their list first, and then we can come together.
Yeah, we need a, a plan too.
So, how would we prioritize our list?
So, well, again, that's what this subcommittee is charged with.
So.
So.
The subcommittee should be working with Mike and Jeff?
Yep.
Who understand that, or?
Mike, when are you free to meet? It's gonna have to be nighttime.
Yeah.
So, we can work with that out offline. Lauren, remember to hit you up once tonight, anything else you thought of since two hours ago?
Talk about next Thursday. Yeah, next Thursday's the DECA trip, which would be exciting, I think we have like eighty students going. Are you going? Mm-hmm, so is my mom, she's chaperoning, okay, that's fun. And then, in terms of student government, right now, we're just looking at the student handbook, and talking with Mr. Tracy about revisions for next year, but we haven't really, today was our first meeting about that, so.
Get rid of that cold shoulder rule.
I wanna talk to you about that for a second too afterwards, okay? I'm, I'm very well-versed in one of the very important topics being discussed at the student government, so.
Alright, any other liaison committee updates, I know there was a Friends of Middle School at Buick, not Buick, that'd be a weird combo, Friends of Middle School and High School meeting Monday morning?
Yeah, it was Monday. Monday morning at eight-thirty. And Principal Harvey will be speaking.
Friends of Buick met last Tuesday.
Couple Wednesdays ago.
A couple Wednesdays ago, yeah.
They're gonna meet again on the eighteenth.
Or Tuesdays ago, maybe it was, no, Mondays, it was a Monday.
Friends of Buick is meeting again on the eighteenth.
They what?
Their meeting, their next meeting is on the eighteenth of March.
Uh.
Friends of Buick.
Yeah, David and I attended the first official CPAC meeting.
Like twenty people.
Of the school year, and really the first one that we've had in several years, and it was very exciting, there were a lot of families of younger children there, which was great for us people who are getting gray hairs, so, and Stacy's working on putting together another meeting and potentially having a core group of officers elected so that they could help her to direct some, you know, programming.
You don't remember to call her, I told her I put the other flyer for her.
So, yeah, I don't think she's selected a date yet, so, but it was exciting, there were several families from the preschool, which has been a very hard group to recruit from last few years.
Yeah, I really wanted to go.
We've even held coffees there, and it's been very hard, so.
I wanted to go to, sort of see where we're at, in the fact that we didn't, didn't have, seemed to be having well-running CPAC, and try and figure that out, but I was actually pretty optimistic by the turnout, especially for our first meeting, right?
Yeah, we did a great.
Then it grows.
We had a great outreach, and that was, that's kind of been an issue before, is that we didn't always have cooperation and outreach, so.
So, that was good, any other Friends group or anything, dates, nothing, nothing?
I failed in my duties as a school.
I just happened to be here, so I don't, I don't look like I was very much, I just happened to be in the building for those two meetings.
Usually I can eat all the time they need, so.
I thought that was interesting that the Friends of Buick were meeting at night that night too, so that was good, yeah.
No, they, I, I met to a meeting with them earlier in the year, I stopped in, and it was in the evening, my, my kids obviously go to Buick, actually I have kids in three schools now, but, but they go here, so I would, I stopped in to sort of see what that was like, having never been to one before, you know, that night was, good, good turnout there too, I think those Friends groups tend to have pretty good turnouts, you know, really, really invested community members.
Yeah, until you get to the middle school, high school, and then.
At that point, you're like, you know what, I've already been raising you for fourteen years now, you're on your own, and it's just a little practice autonomy for college. Alright, topics for next meeting, I think we just filled out, filled up the next two meetings, anything else anyone could think of?
Did we?
Are you gonna start showing up?
Get a communication from the Wenham Selectmen about our meeting?
Nope.
And?
I haven't seen anything.
I've seen nothing.
For what? Well, there was some discussion about them wanting to have a second, you know, like a date if they had to carry over their meeting, and that the, really the only date that was possible while the current town administrator was here was the Wednesday, that would have been, which would be our meeting in April, but if we didn't receive a communication, there's nothing we can do about it.
Didn't he leave in April one?
He's leaving the week.
After town.
Friday after the town meeting.
Oh, is he?
Oh, is he?
That would've been like peace. Alright, we got someone to move?
I moved that we adjourn at, and I can't see the clock.
Eight fifty-nine.
At eight fifty-nine.
I'm gonna put it to the fact that we stopped before nine. All those in favor? So, unanimous.